I would just like to publicly thank the administration.
Say that again, sorry, Gary?
I just wanted somebody, whoever was talking, to use the microphone.
Oh, she is. It looks like it's on. The red light's on.
Is it on its door?
It says it's on. Okay, sorry.
Okay.
The red light's on. Is that on?
Yeah.
All set, Gary?
You're good.
Thanks. I'm Linda Royer. I'm speaking as an employee of Northwood School, and I would just like to publicly thank the administration for all the things that they have given the staff during Teacher Appreciation Week. Each day this week, we have found something in our mailbox. This week, today, we got "You're a very important part of our school." We appreciate all your efforts very much. On behalf of our students and families, we are very thankful for all your contributions to our Northwood School community. And we all got a little package of fruit snacks. So, thank you, Wendy, and thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Mr. Gunter.
Good evening, guys. Thank you for hearing me. So, last time I was here, we talked about doing some repair to your driveway. We went back and talked to, I went back and talked to the Board of Selectmen, and they had decided to allocate $2,500 to fix their portion of the driveway. If the school board so wishes, we can start that project as soon as tomorrow.
Awesome.
So, if you-
Good job, Bree.
A lot of arm twisting, a lot of arm twisting. So, yeah, if you guys vote tonight, the gentleman, he does his Manchester paving. He's done a lot of work for us in town, very high quality. The only thing we're worried about is the trucks backing up into the fire department, but we're going to make sure they're not going to clip the top of the building. But other than that, we're good to go with that.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Last chance. Going, going, gone. Public session is over. Public comment is over. We'll move on to the approval of the school board minutes. Do I get a motion, please?
Motion moved.
Thanks. Any discussion?
I do. I don't know how it happened. I actually have the tape with me if anyone wants to look. But, so, first, I have two things I want to talk about, and they're related. One is, on page 18, Linda Royer, a 34-year educator, on and on. So, as far as I'm concerned, that doesn't reflect anything nearly what she said. I'm on page 18. So, she started out wanting us to, in our next budgeting considerations, to consider a social worker. She also wanted us to consider academic aides in the first grade for each of our first grade, and she had a reasoning behind all of that. I'm not pro or against here. I'm just saying, that does not reflect what Linda Royer brought to the board. And I really would like it to. I'd like in there that she wants a social worker and she wants academic aides.
Anything else?
The other thing that I don't quite understand is, because these are reversed. So, the discussion you had about costing in us-
Yeah, I was going to bring that up, too.
Was in front of or in back of. They're just reversed. The other thing, and I don't know how that happens. You know, I was going through the tape and watching the tape because I was looking for several things. I also don't think that quite reflects, I know it was late in the day at that point of time, but I don't think that reflects exactly what the board and Chairman McGuigan was saying. If it is, then that is exactly what I am 1,000% against because it certainly appears-
So, I think the correction there would be talking about the non-public discussions. On some page-
Seventeen, six, sixty-seven.
So, that whole paragraph is relating to the discussions that occur in non-public meetings, in the non-public sections of the meetings, which I think is the, it all makes sense after that, right, Tim?
Well, yeah, but I mean, you were, there was a long, lengthy discussion about policy and people breaking policy. We're going to get thrown off the board, and I could go on and on, which, none of which is going to happen. I mean, it's, there's nothing, the only thing you can get thrown off the board is breaking the law, et cetera. So, but that, that whole section, too, I really think that the minutes, those two sections should be brought back to us at the next meeting, corrected. I'm not prepared to sit here and correct them. I'm more than willing, if anybody wants my free tape here, to take it with them.
Do you have a tape as well, right?
I do. I can tell you that when Linda Royer was speaking, I really could not hear her.
Okay, and that's fine.
As I could.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I just-
If there's any amount of noise, I just don't get it, so.
So, I just know that what she said is not in there, and I think it should be.
There were portions, yeah, Tim, I didn't hear it.
Okay, so, if you have a tape line, if you would like one of Gary's wonderful CDs, you can take it with you.
I do have a tape. My concern is that the tape will only-
There's your Christmas present. Don't say I didn't give you nothing.
You know, people can speak up or-
Okay, and I would hope that the chair wouldn't let you know that anytime you need us to speak up or them to say so.
Yes, yes.
You know, so that we do get an accurate reflection of what's being said. So, I'm personally not going to vote on these. I hope that we can get them fixed.
Well, you are going to vote. You can vote no if you want, though.
Well, I don't think we should. I think it should be, they should be fixed, and then we should vote on it. I think we should take away our motion and second.
Anything else? Anybody else have any discussions on that?
I just want to say on line 565, it's page 15, and it said that, I said that I wasn't allowed to put anything on the agenda. It was last year that I was told that I was not allowed to put something on the agenda. It was not this year.
Yes. I do remember that, yes.
Okay, okay. I just wanted that clarified. Thank you.
You good? Okay, we have a motion. That's going to be withdrawn. We should just vote on it.
I don't mind withdrawing it and then, or table, can we table the minutes?
We can withdraw it.
Okay.
Withdraw it and we'll bring it back next, we'll bring it back for an up and down vote. We've done that before.
Next meeting. In fact, I think that's the way we should go forward with these minutes in general because we do spend a lot of time on this. Not to get too much into things, but I went to the chairman training at the NH SBA.
Will you hand this down to Barbie?
Yep, and one of the, it was interesting to learn what other people were doing in their board meetings, and some people were like flabbergasted that people would spend time working on minutes in their meeting, and it's kind of a waste of time, which I kind of agree with. So, going forward, I'd really like to, if we get the packets early enough, you see problems, email Suzanne. Let's get them fixed, and then we'll bring them, and when we come up for our meeting, it'll be up and down vote. Just, we're going to vote for them or we're not. They're not fixed to our satisfaction, fine. We'll send them back. Next meeting, we'll do that. We can all, this all can happen offline. We don't need to spend valuable meeting time doing this, in my opinion, so.
I'm not going to do that.
Okay, well.
Yeah, I like to correct minutes.
I'm inviting you to correct them.
Yeah.
Email her. Talk to her about correcting them.
No, I like to correct minutes in public.
Yeah, we're not going to be doing that.
Publicly. We'll see.
Yep. All right, if we're not going to vote on these minutes, do we want to vote on the, is there a motion for the non-public minutes?
Uh, sorry, just a second.
Do we have them?
That's what I was going to say.
I think you do.
You do.
Page 19.
I know we took the draft thing out of there, but I think that's what's throwing me off is I'm so used to just seeing draft on everything.
Do I get a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Nothing passes, non-public minutes. Assistant Superintendent, meeting is yours.
Yeah, don't report this month because I was on vacation. The school was on vacation, and I couldn't get you a census, so you'll get one first meeting next month. And I'm also coming for the superintendent tonight, so some of our stuff will overlap.
All right, you're done?
For now.
Now, all right. Good enough. Fair, fast one. Let's see if you can beat them there.
Oh, yeah, our report is pretty similar. We didn't, we only had one day of school from the time we last met to the time this was due. So, what was included is pretty important, and it's the end of year happenings at Northwood School. This list is all of the events that we have so far scheduled for May and June. It's been posted online. It's been emailed out to families, and it will continue to be updated as things change or get added. So, folks are advised to check that if they want to verify that. There's other information on, in the packet about summer school and building and grounds, and that technology report is in there as well. If there's any questions on those, I can answer those. I just have a couple of things to add that came up since this was printed. One of them is, there was, just so you all know, there was information that was sent to us over the vacation. Ms. Cimoni and I were working over the vacation, and there was a chicken recall that was shared with schools. And we took the information. We sent it to Viola Canella, and she did whatever checking she needed to first thing Monday morning when she came in to make sure that there were no recalled chicken products on our menu for the first week of May. We have chicken all the time. But she did get confirmation that there were not any products that were from the companies that we deal with, and there was a notification that the companies that we deal with were not part of the recall. So, none of the recalled cases came through Original Pizza, which is a company that we deal with. So, she was on it. I just wanted you all to be aware that it came in. It was over vacation. She got right on it Monday morning, and the vendor that was recalled is Gold Kissed and/or Pilgrim's Pride, and that did not affect our lunch delivery. That's one thing. I did want to mention, just Teacher Appreciation Week, in honor of all the teachers, Ms. Royer mentioned it already, but in honor of all of the teachers, bus drivers, preschool teachers, specialists in the building, support staff members, anybody and everybody who works for us has been recognized each day of this week with a treat similar to the ones that Ms. Royer shared, and we just wanted to say thank you to all of them publicly because without them, this place would not be what it is today. And they are very much appreciated for their timeless energy and efforts that they dedicate to the Northwood School, not only to the children who are here each day, but to the families and to the community. So, we're very thankful for what they, what they offer.
Can I add a little to that?
Yeah.
Sorry, that's okay. So, the PTA usually does the luncheon this week. Unfortunately, our numbers are few, and we just weren't able to get it together, but we are doing a luncheon next week. So, if anyone from the board would like to come in on the- 12th? Is it? The Thursday, whatever the Thursday is.
12th.
The 12th, we will be serving lunch to the staff. And any help, as always, is appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you to the PTA. An update on our Artist in Residency Program. We are in day four of five, and it is fantastic. It is the most inspiring project I've ever seen done with a group of K8 students. Hans Schepker is wonderful. He's been here each day, every day, working with the 7th and 8th graders. They've nearly completed three giant panels that are going to be installed in the first foyer as you enter from the courtyard. They're gorgeous. They're absolutely gorgeous, and to avoid any kind of breakage or moving them unaccompanied, I did not bring any with me into the library as much as I wanted to for this meeting, but we will get some photographs when they are installed. But he's been, he's been fantastic, and the project has gone really, really well. I want to thank the 7th and 8th grade teachers who have been very supportive of kids coming out of their classes, and all of the other primary teachers who have been supportive of their younger students not having their art instruction, particularly this week, so with Mr. Olerone for me. So, thank you, thank you, thank you to everybody that's participated. The project is wonderful. We will share pictures, and it culminates tomorrow. So, if anybody has an interest and wants to come see it, I know many of you have already, they will be working all day tomorrow to finish it up, and as soon as they are installed, we will have it to share with the community. But they're sustainable. They're gorgeous. They're going to be up for quite a long time, and all I can say is mission accomplished. The promise has been fulfilled, and our Artist in Residency Program has been nearly completed. So, we're very happy about that. And reading and math program updates. I know we've talked a lot about it. The reading and math programs have been purchased, and I want to thank the board for all the support financially. I know with the default budget, we ran into some difficulties, but we worked through those in a very timely way, and the total that was approved by the board was just over $95,000 for the two pieces together, the two programs together. And our requisitions with the math and the reading combined totaled just under that at $94,000. So, between the two programs, the three programs, if you count the two reading programs and the math, we came under budget by at least $1,000 with what was approved. So, we're very thankful about that. We're now inventorying and checking out what has arrived and trying to catalog it all. So, that will take some time, but our staff's really excited about getting into it, and again, we thank you for the support on that. The summer curriculum work, we've, I've been talking with staff. Staff has been talking amongst groups of staff, and I did want to share with you, and I can pass a couple of these around. We did get a formal summer curriculum proposal submitted by our reading specialist, Donna Turco, who's in the audience today. She has been working, over the last two years that I've been here, she's been working on it, but she continues to work on it and has drafted a proposal to more specifically outline what would be done during the summer curriculum days. I know we approved a value of about $5,500 at the last meeting, and she has given a kind of a scope and sequence of how that money would be spent over a three-day period to work on ELA and reading curriculum. That's, that's what we've had the most advances in, and we're continuing to make progress in that area. And there are staff members across all grade levels who are interested in completing this work. So, I'll just pass these around so that you can have just a copy of the information that was shared. If you want to review it, you certainly can, but I just wanted you to know that there is a direction, and there is some leadership from Donna Turco to oversee this project, and there will be a tangible outcome at the end of this three-day stint of work, and we can certainly share that with you all once that's completed. But I do believe the amount that has been requested fits right in with what was supported at the board meeting last time we met. The math, there has been some interest in looking at the math, and we're still looking to develop something if folks want to come out and work on trying to organize a specific agenda and a specific task list to complete for the math. We're not as far along nearly in the math as we are in the ELA, so if that was going to come about, we would bring that to you at a later date. And if there was a request for funds that was attached to that, then that would be above and beyond what's been approved that will go to the ELA. And that's, that's informational, and that came in after the board meeting packet was drafted. So, I wanted you to have that. And certainly, if you had any feedback, you can certainly bring it to the next meeting. And the last piece is that RFPs, as a follow-up, RFPs have gone out for the items that we spoke about regarding the art room cabinets and countertops and also the paving. So, those have gone out with a turnaround time, May 18th, with the work to begin, to some extent, before June 30th.
And that's just the paving down back? That doesn't-
No, that's the paving in the front.
Oh.
The RFP went out for the paving in the front before we got any news from Mr. Gunter about what the town might be doing, so.
So, in that thing, is, you talked about the sinkhole in the back. Is that part of the paving?
I did not see that in the RFP.
The RFPs are, have been made for the front, the three segments of the front lot.
So, this is just, yeah, because I-
Which, which is fine because it will coincide with the, what the town's going to give us, but we definitely need to look at during an RFP for the back of the building by the kindergarten playground.
Is there a way to add that on to that RFP or anything like that? I mean, isn't, is it something that should be done all at once? I don't know anything about this, so I'm just asking, but I don't want that-
I don't know if you can ask whoever comes to give us a value on how much it's going to cost to do the other part as well when they come.
Is that, like, legal? Or do we have to RFP it?
Does it cost, right, it's less than $5,000?
Right.
The whole point is, we had a meeting. We walked the area. We explained that we wanted, I believe, three different bids, all working in conjunction, and we didn't get that, so.
Well, the, it's, the three, we used the notes from our meeting, and the three different segments were outlined in here. To my understanding, it was three different segments within the front lot.
No.
Because that was the total that was going to exceed $5,000. Any of the work that was going to be done in the back lot-
That's just not correct.
Okay, that was my understanding and my notes that I took the day I was with you guys.
We walked around back, and we looked at the sinkhole. We also looked at the ramp going down to a-
The dumpster.
Shed of dumpsters. And anytime you put out something like this, it's certainly cheaper to get all three done at the same time if we have the money.
We can adjust the RFP or send out another one. I sent the RFP draft out to anyone that was on the Facilities Committee for feedback. I didn't get any, so they went out as written based on the notes that we took when we were all in the meeting. If it needs to be revised, we can certainly revise.
Why don't we have another Facilities Committee meeting, then, where you guys can work this out and figure out what-
Yeah, I mean, and you, if I'm misunderstanding the words you guys are using, or if it's not being reflected in the notes that I'm taking as you're speaking, then certainly update the notes or update the RFP, and Linda Osborne will update the RFP.
Let's just go into the committee. Have the committee meet. You meet with the committee and figure it out.
We can just readjust the RFP.
Sure, and then, and then you can bring it back to us in two weeks, and we can vote on, on the-
Paving, and that is certainly not any expertise that I have, so wording is not something that's in my area of expertise. So, you all have the drafts. You all have the information. Anything you have to add to it can certainly be added.
I mean, is a, is a two-week delay going to change the selectmen's opinion, you think, or is this, is this something we need to work on, get going faster?
So, for the town, the RF, there was no need for RFP. It was under $2,500, so we could just go ahead with it. For you guys, I don't know what your rules are, but if it's, your portion is $2,500.
We wouldn't need RFP for that.
Yeah, I assume, I would have guessed not, so, yeah.
But again, that's just in front of the-
That's just the skirt for the, for the driveway. That's not any kind of-
So, we may, so we may want to, from one hearing, is we may want to expand that and have, make a bigger project, and so the cost is likely to go above.
The town will give us $2,500 towards the front portion.
If we do that.
I just want to ask, I guess, is the town, like, jumping, you know, jumping up a bit to do this and-
No, not at all. That, I mean, our budget's good till, you know, till it's not, but, yeah, we're not in any hurry.
So, okay. All right, thanks. So, let's do that. Let's go back to the committee. Come back next meeting with a proposal that we can vote on, okay?
Well, we'll-
And bids if possible.
Well, not just a proposal, because we have to get that out sooner. So, well, I will redraft the proposal with Wendy and Tim on the paving and get this RFP out as soon as possible by, you know, either tomorrow or next, early next week, so we could get bids, so we could come back and hopefully on May 19th.
So, if we have the bids, make sure we get them on the, talk to me, make sure we can get it on the agenda for approving.
Got it.
If we can, if we get all the bids that we, that we need, okay?
Yeah.
Anything else, Wendy?
Uh, no, that's it. Can I add some, or ask a question for the Artist in Residence? When I was in the art room the other night, listening to the kids that were interacting with, is it Hans? Mm-hmm. And everything, even the younger kids were saying that it's something that they would like to see and do. Mm-hmm. So, how, is there a way to go about sort of keeping this gentleman to do something else in the school? I don't know if that's something that has, that we can vote on, or, I apologize for saying this, but if we have to bring it up with the next administration and let them decide it, I just didn't know. But I, but I heard that from several kids that were in the room at the same time, that, you know, it's something that they would like to do, and it was only the 7th and 8th graders that got to do it this time. And I feel like if we have this gentleman who works and can maybe work with the math teachers and the younger ones to do something like this.
So, I'm talking with Wendy. I believe he's willing to.
Right, he is, and yes, he said that.
So, I think it's something that we're, next year, we're not going to do it again this year.
So, Artist in Residence is in the budget again for next year, and I've talked to both Sehgun and Hans about whether or not we want to consider, it certainly has been reinvigorated. So, whether it's the continuation of similar work with the same artist or another art project with a different grade, a different focus, a different outcome, that can certainly all be considered. I know Sehgun had had two other artists that he was also interested in working with that may bring something different. So, it would be great to have more than one project if you all want to look at voting and maybe having that come about. But one of the things with the glass is the age of the student and the soldering and-
Sharp glass.
Sharp glass and all of that. It wouldn't be something that would be suitable for the primary grades, so that is why, because of the nature of the work he does, we focus on grade seven and eight in this particular project. So, looking at what grades we would want to target moving forward, that might determine what type of project or what scope of project we look at. But Sehgun has tons of ideas and is connected, is well-connected in art circles to be able to now with advance notice, bring some people in and have some proposals considered, and then maybe the board votes on which proposal they think would be the best at the time.
I just want to say, too, Mr. O's done a great job with the artwork that, like, that we see, like, around the library, and I saw the hands that were in the art room the other night. Those were really cool and-
Yep.
Stuff like that. So, it's great to see that in the school.
And the one thing I forgot to mention was there was a bulletin board, a mural installed already in the front entryway on Route Four that I believe 7th grade painted, and it says, "Welcome to Northwood School," and it's right above the doorway. So, that is one that's already been installed that he did with one of his classes.
Great.
All right, anything else for Wendy? Moving on, then, personnel report.
Two personnel reports. The first is on page 22 and 23, and the other is the one that I just passed out. It's the higher sheet that we're done today.
Do you see, if it's just informational, we don't need to vote on that?
Correct.
So, can I get a nomination for-
Jane Brogan for neck tutor, neck tutor, for 1824, an hour.
Brogan?
Brogan, B-R-O, it's on the sheet that he just handed you. It's on the other side.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I'm not sure what we're voting on.
The neck tutor?
The neck tutor?
The one he just handed out?
Oh, he just-
Scott just handed it out. Turn that. Is that the one, it might be the one on your, oh, there it is, yep.
Guys, want a minute, or are you good? Okay, do you have any discussion? Move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Jane, what was your vote?
Aye, sorry.
Aye, Tim, irané?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Anything else? Personnel. Principal Search Committee, then.
So, I explained what I'm passing out. Dr. Gudomsky gave me to me today. Everything together for the application. So, he made a cover sheet with his recommendations on who's at the committee, and he left blanks for the board to discuss. And then, on page, on the second page, is a sample schedule of what the interviews would look like. And then, the pages after that are the people who have expressed interest in serving on that committee for the board to decide.
Well, they had one parent respond.
Can you give me your recommendations? Or not your recommendations, but the recommendations, please?
Well, I think your, I think your parent choices.
Yeah, well, that's one pretty-
Well, there's only one.
There's only one, okay, yeah. Our school board member.
That's your former board member.
Yep.
The school board member is really up to the board on who's interested in doing it. Tim, right?
How did this go out? Like...
Yeah, I don't know.
Huh?
Yeah. How did it go?
How did it go out to parents or whatever? Because I know that I never received anything. And neither did my significant other, and...
Yeah. I am not completely sure. I was away when...
I'm just a little concerned that we only had one parent.
Yeah, we have no options.
Right.
It's going to be yes or no, and then there's no.
I agree 100%. I mean, we should have gone out somehow.
We certainly could have... We certainly could have Ms. Daypre use the automated system and see if she can get a list of parents who are interested.
Or something in the sign.
I think we would have more parents.
Whatever you ask me to do.
Four o'clock in the morning.
Take me off that list.
Yeah, I think, I would like to see more. Because I think we would have more parents willing.
I agree.
You'd have a lot. I'm sure you'd have a lot if they knew it was an option.
So one issue with this is that it doesn't... Our schedule, you know, they're going to get moving, right? And we will have a meeting before interviews and reviewing starts. The first interview is May 18.
They make suggestions?
Yeah.
If Dr. Godomsky or the SAU or the board wants to craft an email, I'm happy to send it via the email process that we have. I would prefer not to be the one crafting it myself for obviously... So if someone sends it to me...
I mean, do you want me to work with Steve directly?
I was just going to say, why doesn't he work with Steve?
Uh, either...
Whatever works for you.
Oh, it comes from Steve, yes. I think that's appropriate.
Or with Michelle. It could come from Michelle, since she's on the committee.
Okay.
Or Steve. Or me. I have no problem sending it out. I just would prefer not to craft it.
I certainly understand.
Yep. So the thing is, our next meeting is May 19. This is after the first interview in the sample schedule, so...
I just feel like, I mean, I don't mind that if Dr. Godomsky and Mr. Runing pick the person.
Okay.
I just feel like this is, if this is the one and only... I just think it would be nice if we could at least let parents know that it's out there and that we want the involvement of the community. And, you know, if they feel like this is the right person, so be it.
And if we don't even know how this was advertised, we don't know that enough parents even know about this.
Absolutely.
So I agree with you.
Okay, so if we have an email sent out and then we have the superintendent, Mr. Runing, pick which parent?
Even if you want to put them in a hat and pick one out, I don't care. I just, I just feel like, you know...
Sometimes that's the only, we agree.
Do you want to pick it out, Wendy? Just kidding.
Sure. I'll pick it out.
I will work with Ms. Cremoni tomorrow and get an email out to the parents and ask for a response by next Tuesday or Wednesday.
Yeah, at the latest.
Does that sound fair?
Because, yeah, you need it before the 18th.
Right.
But you have several teacher volunteers to choose from.
And how many teachers do we need? What was the requirement for that?
One.
Just one teacher.
Just all one, right?
And again, I mean, do we need to decide this? I don't... I didn't, I guess I didn't realize that we were deciding who was on the committee, except for who was from the...
I don't think it was incredibly, no, I wasn't here, but I don't think it was incredibly clear to the superintendent about who was picking who. I think there was a lot of discussion and maybe not a decision to make. If you want Dr. Godomsky to pick who's on the committee...
Boy, I disagree with that.
With what?
That it wasn't clear. It's very clear. It's in the minutes if you want to read it.
What does it say in the minutes?
That the board would approve the committee.
Okay.
Well, approve and pick is not the same, does not mean the same thing, but...
Okay. So we are open to whatever you'd like to do.
So this is, I guess, I'm just looking here. Just, so that's a support staff. The reading specialist. So Donna, it looks like, Donna Turco, at least it looks like, is a recommendation to me because he has her on the list already. And then, so maybe that's what this is, is the paraprofessional. And maybe that's what these are, are the recommendations? Are these, or are these...
Those are the people that expressed interest.
So these are the only people that expressed interest?
Emails were sent out to the entire staff. From the teaching union, they sent out an email. And from the support staff union, they sent out an email.
So non-union members didn't get it?
No, they got it. The ones that are represented by the CBA, it's not the ones that are active members of the CBA, of the union. Any that are represented by the teachers agreement or represented by the support staff agreement got it.
They all fit into...
That's what I was thinking, too. They all fit into the paraprofessional.
Yeah, paraprofessional.
The ones that we have here.
No, you've got, you've got a teacher there.
There's at least two.
You've got two pairs, you've got one teacher.
Sharon Plord and Lynda Roy are teachers.
Yeah, Lynda Roy is a paraprofessional.
Oh, she's not.
So Ms. Plord is the only teacher on here, right?
Correct.
I think we can put her in for that.
Congratulations.
There's only one reading specialist, too.
I'm not saying that that's not good, but I feel bad that it's by default, you know? It's really...
Yes, she is.
She would be considered a teacher.
Yeah.
Jody.
Oh, okay.
The case manager.
There's two, Jody and Sharon.
Okay, so case manager is considered, okay.
Yes.
All right. So reading specialists, we have Donna Turco as the only one. So I recommend Donna Turco as the reading specialist.
Yeah, and that's there. So, but second, I think that's fine.
So...
Again, I feel like we're voting on it and...
Well, this is not any information to vote on. Right, I mean, unless, unless you have personal knowledge of these people, you don't really know anything about it. So honestly, I think, I think we should ship this back to the superintendent, tell him to come back with a list, a full list, and then we can vote on that. You know, up or down, you know? We don't need to...
I guess, again, my question is, do we need to vote on it?
Right.
What do you mean, a full list? Full list of like 50 people that will be here all night?
The list of, the list of the committee. And I agree with you. I don't even know, I don't even know that we have to agree on.
Right, I think that we've... Tim has said that he's interested. Let's give it to the school. And again, I don't think this was made clear to Dr. Godomsky the last time.
I don't think it was either.
I think that the school board member is Tim. You know, he told us that Mr. Runing and himself would be on it. And I think it's great that Donna Turco is on it. I think that unfortunately, we didn't get many teachers or paraprofessionals that are interested in it. But whoever he feels is the best person, or the two of you feel together. And then it would be nice if more parents were given that information. And if so happens in that meantime, that more teachers or paraprofessionals come forward, they could be considered also.
So I agree.
But I don't... My feeling is, we don't need to vote on this. We voted Tim in, he's our representative.
Well, you didn't vote me in, you just threw it at me. So, and I'm voting myself out, so I am not going to vote.
I guess I'm confused because you said you wanted to be on it. So don't say we threw it at you.
Circumstances. This is just being, it's not the way I think things should be done. So another member can do it. Thank you.
So be it.
Were you, were interested at one point? Are you still interested?
I'll do it.
So we'll put in Bree for the school board then? No. Nope.
So the conclusion is that Bree will get with the superintendent and decide between the email that's going to be sent out in the next few days to find out by Tuesday or Wednesday for the committee. Is that correct? Is that what...
I think we're going to send out an email to make sure that all parents, all parents are informed, right? So that they can, if they can express interest. And then we're going to tell the superintendent and Mr. Runing to pick their committee.
But they need to have a deadline in that emailing.
I think they have a...
Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay.
Because the other holdup is, or potential holdup is, we want to get cracking.
Absolutely. Well, I think that's another reason to, you know, I hate to say throw it in your lap, but another reason to have you guys pick a committee and...
When are our interviews? I just want to, Bree, because I know you work.
Yeah, I'm going to need to know that.
What are our interviews typically scheduled for?
Well, really, that's the committee decision. Once you get the committee together, you have a scheduling meeting and you decide that together based on people's constraints and schedules.
Okay.
So you're trying to be respective of all the parties.
Mm-hmm.
Working parties in particular. And then they come up with a schedule that works for everybody.
You sure you want to be out of this?
Yes, oh yeah.
Okay.
You all set then?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
I'll figure it out.
And Bree, we'll probably get with you first before we meet to start framing things so they work for your schedule.
Thank you. I know, right?
It's a full-time job being here, unfortunately. Okay. Is there anything else for the superintendent's report? Uh, any, did any subcommittees meet in the last two weeks?
We did meet, but I'd like to, the clubs committee met... Yeah, the clubs committee met two weeks ago, right?
Yes.
Two weeks ago.
24.
And I wasn't able to send this to you guys, but Lauren Dow was able to send it to Dr. Godomsky and he was able to print it. So that these are the recommendations of the clubs committee for the... What's that?
Will you pass them around?
I did. I didn't pass you out because I didn't have enough copies, Wendy. If you need it, you can, okay. There was only enough for...
So if you guys don't mind, I'd like to, um... Let's look at this briefly. Have a discussion and then be prepared to have a vote on it at the next meeting. Because we're not in a rush for this, right? This doesn't have to be decided until...
It's next year's.
Next year. Right. So just so that we can digest it, think about it, and then have some...
As I said with the last meeting, the one thing, and I know Tim had said, I guess it's a contractual thing and we can look at, and I want to bring it up again, is looking at either adding more money into the stipends for the clubs committee or trying to take the drama club out so that, again, I don't know where you would put it, but because it is a big chunk of that $15,000.
So I would think the time to discuss that would be when we're talking about our budget for, unfortunately, for the year after, next year. Right. Because that's when we could add a new item for drama.
Right, but I just want it, I just want it out there that that's one of the big things that was discussed because, and I forgot my notebook from that meeting, but I think it's something like six more clubs could be possibly added to this list.
Right.
If we were able to do that, either add more money to it. And again, that would be a contractual thing that we would need to... We'd actually need to talk about it, too, if we were going to do it in, for negotiations.
Yeah. Oh, right.
If we're going to add it to the contract.
It's collective bargaining.
Right, and then, okay, right. So we'll just have to keep that, keep that in our heads, I guess. Is that something, should we add it on to a think about later list, parking lot item?
I would add it, so don't forget it.
Yeah, so we don't forget, yeah.
Add, um...
I'd like to see at least...
Lot of stipends or studio drama for a parking lot item list.
Need another $5,000. Just for clarification for some people in the audience who may or may not have been here before, when they're talking about the drama piece, they're talking about changing the origin of the funding. They're not talking about minimizing drama or minimizing the assistant drama person or changing any of the scope of the drama. It's just a matter of whether it can be funded from a different source to free up the monies in one source to go to new clubs and have a different source funding the drama clubs. That is still very much appreciated and very much supported and not going anywhere anytime soon, as far as I know. It's just a matter of where the funding might come from. Or if we were to increase the amount of money available, it could accommodate more clubs without taking money away from clubs that are so big like drama.
All right, thank you. Do you have any questions towards the recommendations of the club committee?
So I have one question, one statement. My question is, have we always paid the eighth grade advisor out of this fund? Or is that new?
I remember doing that last year at least. I don't know if it's always, but...
Last year, there were two advisors and they split it, and it was out of this fund. This year, it was one advisor and it's out of this fund. Prior to that, I don't know that answer.
The other thing is, I just don't understand when we have a club fund, why we would take one group of clubs out of the club fund and fund it some other way. It just, to me, sounds like shenanigans. If we want an extra $5,000, then do the work, fight the fight, and go for the $5,000.
And that's what I said, but it has to be part of the CBA, like you said.
It is, but they're not going to turn down an extra $5,000.
Absolutely, but that's, yeah, that's why I said it's something that has to be...
We'll end up in the budget one way or the other. But to take some clubs out to give more money to other clubs just makes no sense to me. It's a club fund. It should all be in the clubs.
Any other subcommittee reports? Would anyone like to report on any other activities? I know the two of you went to the new board orientation.
I sent a copy of the documents we got over to Barbie and Tim just so they could have a copy, since the rest of us had it.
Any feedback on that? Did you guys, do you find it useful? I'm just curious.
I think it was really after you. Thank you, Bree, but I have a second. Go ahead.
It wasn't very informative. I mean, there was a very general, and there's a lot of information. The right-to-know law was okay. I mean, it's a one-day course, you know, in 45 minutes. But the problem that you see there is that you've got everybody that wants to talk about their issues about their own school board. And it just bogged down everything, and it was just a waste of time, so...
I actually found the interaction between the board chair and the superintendent that were doing the various presentations, I found that very helpful. Just seeing the relationship they built. I thought that was very inspirational. And I don't know how they got there, but I think that this board could do a lot of work and I don't know how they got there, but I think that this board could do a lot of work to get to building a relationship like that.
Yeah, I, I went to the, I attended the chair workshop, and honestly, I thought that was very interesting, just to see, even if you get a chance to go to it, I would recommend you do, just because I thought it was a general board. How boards should be run, you could see how other, other boards are run and stuff, and what makes an effective meeting, and I thought it was pretty great. There were some parts in there about, uh, dealing with reporters, which I hope to never have to do, but, that's, that's the one thing. Okay.
There were some other parts, um, in ours about dealing with angry parents, so that was, yeah, that was, again, kind of down in the weeds of it, just very specific issues and things like that, but...
But, but even in my meeting, it did have some of the same things, where people just want to talk about their issues.
Yeah.
Right, which is good and bad, I think, I, you know, it definitely bogs things down.
I think it was worth, you know, the three hours. I think it was useful.
Thank you for this, because I think it's, sorry, I just said, because, you know, page one through floor is actually one of the things that I plan on emailing Dr. Kadomski and having Barrett...
Christina.
Thank you. Talk about, because I feel like, and I know where it comes from in this district, but I feel like the school board doesn't know their role enough of what we need, and I think these, you know, page one through four is very important for us to all look at and to know what our role is, what the, the SAU, the superintendent's role is, what the principal's role is, and, and I don't know how many times I've said it...
From my point of view, I agree with you. From my point of view, what I saw happening is, there's a lot of discussion about the role of the board, too, in, in our workshop, and how we should be a strategic board, and not get bogged down in operations, and, you know, we, we, we do things via policy, you know, and I, I, I think sometimes we do get stuck there, and, and it'd be great to up-level ourselves, like, if we can let go of some of the operational stuff and, and give it to our educators to do, then we can focus more, we have more time to focus on strategy and to...
Absolutely. We pay these people to do this, and we're trying to do a job that they've been educated to do.
It's, it's gonna be hard, though. It's gonna be hard.
Absolutely, and I understand where the mistrust comes from, but I think it's time to rebuild. I think it's time to rebuild.
Well, that's when I step in and say, "It's worked so well, let's just keep doing the same old thing we've been doing." It's worked so well.
It has not worked well, that's the problem.
As sarcastic as I can get, this has worked so well, to just say, "Let them do the job and we'll go home."
One thing I want to point out, that, that Christina said, that, um, we should take advantage, we're taking advantage now in June for him coming down, but he's also willing to come down and speak to the board and the public about anything they want. He's free to come down, if there's an issue or something they want to talk about, if he wants, or even the rights to know law, if he wants to come down and give a presentation to the board and the public or anything, he'll, he's willing to do that, so. I thought that was pretty cool, that he was giving himself up for, for free.
Yep. Well, we pay.
We pay.
Yeah. We pay the NH, NHSBA.
Last note, just because we're talking about it, was, um, another thing that, that was stressed in, in my training, was following the agenda, and, and having a good agenda, and I think it's a, a very good idea to have a clear agenda that we can distribute to people, so that everybody knows exactly what we're talking about. To me, it's gonna be good, it, it dovetails well in with our goal of communication. If we can have an agenda and put it out there, so the public knows what we're gonna talk about, so the staff knows what we're gonna talk about, and so we all know what we're gonna talk about, and we don't get, no one gets blindsided by new issues that come up. So, uh, going forward, I'd like to have a little more, I'm, I'm gonna work on this, and this is on me, uh, to have a little more detailed agenda, these are the things we're talking about, and also trying to stick to the agenda a little bit more, and not, new issues that come up, great, well, we'll put those on the agenda for the following week, no problem. You know, we can definitely do that, for the following meeting, I mean. But it is something I, I want to try to work on. I think it would improve our meetings, it would, I think it would make them better. There was some comment, too, about how, you know, once your meetings go on past eight-thirty-nine o'clock, then, then people aren't doing so well mentally, and I think we've all seen evidence of that, uh, over the years, um, and I think sticking to the agenda would help, would help us get there, would help us have...
I think another thing you just made me think of was, um, the talk about the policies and the policy subcommittees.
Yep.
And how, bringing those policies to the board is fine for review, but to discuss them here, it's really not a good use of our time, that's what the policy subcommittee is for.
Absolutely. That's what all the subcommittees are for, in my opinion, right? Is, is the actual, you know, day-to-day, not day-to-day, but the more detailed conversations.
So, five policies on the agenda, I don't know, one or two meetings ago, was, it, it took up a lot of time, and I don't think that we accomplished anything doing that, to be perfectly honest.
You're talking about the ones from last, last week?
Yeah, I can't remember when that was.
The B ones, or...
Yeah, the B ones.
I did, that was on me. I, I did that because those were...
I tried to talk them out of it.
He did, actually. Those were, those were like board policies, as to how the boards were...
It's fine for us to review, to, you know, have them on there, but I just, I don't know, sending them to the policy committee seems the place for that.
Yeah, but I think in a way, what you, your point was, I thought that was a good point. It got us to review them, and, and like Tim pointed out in the meeting, it was great to hear that we had all read them, and that we could all make a point to them, and they are our policies. So, those ones I agree with, but it's the, you know, the fifteen-page nuts and bolts...
But, but we do have to go through them.
Sexual harassment policy?
Yeah.
But again, as long as we're following the law, and the committees looked at them...
We do need to go through them, I do expect the committee to do that work. Yeah, but, but they will come up to us, and we should review them, obviously, and, and unless there's, you know, if there's something egregious on there, yes, we should talk about that, but, uh, yeah, I'd be willing to trust the committee to, to get the right stuff in there. And, and, you know, we know who's on the committee, so we just need to, if we have feedback on things, we have to talk to them, right? I mean, that's what they're there for, right? So, this guy, and that guy. So, speaking of that, the policy committee, we, we, I wanted to have some policies on this, since I know everybody loves them so much. But the policy committee didn't get me anything. We need to fix that.
We're, we...
So, again, it seems like you want to be the policy person, so have at it.
I don't necessarily, but if nobody else wants to do it, I'll do it.
You, you sent me away to have a policy meeting with Scott. Scott and I had that meeting.
You did.
You gave us directions, we followed those directions, uh, and you went in and changed it off. So, you're welcome to the policy committee, too.
I don't understand what you're saying, but...
I'm saying just what I said.
What did I change?
You, what, the policy, the last meeting, what Scott and I had discussed, and we were gonna bring to the board, was totally nixed by you went in and... I have an email. Scott wanted you to know that there are several policies that Chairman McQuiggin asked to be included in the current pack, either that has been done. You can have that one, too. Merry Christmas.
Okay, so you, you don't want to do the policy committee's work, so?
Nope, no, not, not if you're gonna go around behind and change things. I don't. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to be on the policy committee, then?
My only concern is that I have time constraints, you know, I can only meet one day a week.
What time are we talking for, policy committee meetings?
An hour, every two weeks.
Yeah, and I, and as long as we can do them on a Thursday, I'm fine with that, but that's the only day that I can meet.
Do you want to make the effort to do that, or, I mean, I'll...
I'll, we can work around you.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with doing that, it's just...
I'll have Mrs. Lee send you an email tomorrow, and we'll schedule it out.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, it's just, Thursdays are just my only day off, so...
But we're not meeting tomorrow. We were meeting tomorrow, but we're not meeting tomorrow now.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Unless anybody wants to join us, we're meeting tomorrow at eight-thirty.
We have a meeting set for eight-thirty, but it would just be you and I, and that might not work out.
No, that won't work.
I'm with it, I'm here, like, literally here.
I'm here, so, we'll just, I'll have Debbie schedule it, okay? I know your day, Thursday, right?
Thursday's my day.
Any other subcommittee reports I didn't think of? We'll go on to that, any new business?
Well, Chairman McQuiggin, you're talking about the agenda and sticking to the agenda, so do us something new, so I'm gonna leave, you know what it is, so, I can do it now, or we can do it next time and put it on the agenda. That's up to you.
If there is no, if there is, unless there's a reason to do it now, let's do it next time on the agenda. Let's do it next time.
It can wait.
Okay.
I have...
I was gonna start enforcing that next, next week, by the way.
Well, then, let me do this now, and then if people have confusion, I can put documentation that's a little easier to read in the pack.
Okay.
So...
Why don't you, okay.
So, let me do this really quickly. So, next year will be the first year that your teachers and your paraprofessionals are all on the same health insurance plan. Right? Is that correct?
Yep.
Associations?
Yep.
And there was a brief discussion, I believe, at some point, about what, what we, what to do with the non-CBA employees, which next year, though, will be four. And there was some discussion about costing out of pocket, so I'm just gonna briefly go over this. So, for the employees that are hundred percent of their health care covered, the cost right now is, is about twenty-eight thousand dollars. And next year, if you stick with that same plan, that'll actually go down to about twenty-seven thousand dollars. I'm rounding up by a hundred dollars, but, um, and that is for the, the BC five, so the five-dollar copay with the three-fifteen-one prescription, so that's three-dollar generic, fifteen-brand, and then, uh, one-dollar mail-away. Okay? The plan that the teachers and the paraprofessionals are switching to, um, if we did a comparison, that would be about twenty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars a year for next year, so that'd be a savings of just under five thousand dollars per employee, times those four. And then the question, I believe, that came up from some members of the board was, "Well, what does the out-of-pocket change to?" Well, the out-of-pocket for the employee, for two of the positions, hasn't changed to anything, because they're a hundred percent paid, right? For two of the other employees, if they switch to the other plan with the reductions, it would save one of the employees two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars a year, and the other employee a hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars a year. So, but here's the rub. The first plan has a five-dollar copay, the second plan that everybody else is going to has a twenty-dollar copay, right? And then the cost of the prescriptions would be either three-fifteen-one for the first plan, or they're ten, twenty, or forty-five for the second plan. So, we can't really calculate what the cost is going to be per employee, because that has to do with their experience with the insurance. Information that we really don't want to know, or distribute. So, it's a tough question to answer. And that was just all the information that I was asked to present tonight.
So, what kind of, do we need a decision on this? Or is this...
Well, I mean, contracts are being prepared, I don't know if you need a decision, I, I think it might be nice to have a discussion about how, if you want to have everybody in the same plan, how do you want that to look? How do you want that to work? What are the potential? What? Well, do you want to just make a decision to switch everybody to a plan?
With the contracts coming up.
With the contracts coming up, which is a...
Me, yes.
Okay. Or, do you want to use an attrition approach? Like, if somebody leaves, the next person coming in has offered this. I mean, those are really, or do you want to keep thinking...
The others we didn't do through attrition, as far as I'm concerned.
Right.
I mean, the goal of the board for a long time is to get everybody in this school on one policy, and that, that's, that's the way I would vote.
Or the third choice is just to leave it the same? I mean, those are really the three choices that the board has.
So, it sounds like there's a significant savings in, in changing to the new plan as well. I mean, it's thirty thousand dollars. It's not jump change. However, there may be additional costs to the employer, employees about that, so...
Copay, and, you know, instead of one dollar, five dollars, instead of five dollars, ten dollars, or whatever, on prescriptions.
Right, so I think, I think just, just turning it into straight, you know, hey, this is our contract with the new plans, isn't overly fair, in my opinion.
Did you say thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Six people, times five-ish?
No, it's four people, times forty, so, it's really, you got something to consider. Seventeen thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and twenty-four cents.
I understood it as it was only going to be, so this is per person, that you, like, the twenty-eight, twenty-seven, and twenty-three, that your twenty-two, whatever, that you were talking about, that's per person? I thought that was the total cost to us, so I was thinking it was only like a five or six thousand dollars. That's why...
Per, so, two of the positions, three of the positions, it's four thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars times three. Right? And then one of the positions is thirty-five, forty-one, twenty, because they pay a portion.
So, my thought on this is that, you know, reducing their insurance is, is, it means something to people, obviously, I mean, it's a benefit that's being reduced. I would think we could take some of the savings that we're going to get from having a lower-cost insurance plan, and maybe giving that back to them in pay, so that they can cover these extra copays and, and whatnot. Although I know it's hard to figure out how much that would be, maybe we could, you know, estimate it generously.
Are you saying just one year, though? Because that's not something that we can do going forward. It would only be a one-year thing, correct?
Well, these are, are these one-year contracts?
Yeah. Well, they're, they're, yeah, they're one-year contracts, July one to June thirtieth. But it would be only, so...
I, I don't know how much sense that would make to do it for one, so, here's the, I mean, and I'm not making a recommendation, I'm just trying to outline the potential.
Right.
So, I make five dollars, and you're gonna give me five more dollars for one year, and then the next year, you're gonna take that five dollars away.
Right.
That doesn't really feel very good, and it's more than five dollars, but...
Right.
Well, why would you, why, I don't understand why you're saying...
Well, no, I think the question was, the question from Barbie was, "Do we do this for one year?" And...
Well, I think the contracts are year-by-year, right? So, next year, we'd have to...
Do it again.
But we wouldn't have that savings next year.
Yeah, it'd be flatlined.
Because right now, this is, this is our quote. Next year, our quote would be, so if we go with the one, the same packet that the teachers and the pairs have, the quote will be less. There's not going, right now, we've, we've, we've put into our budget for the twenty-eight thousand, if we go with twenty-three.
Well, we already have that problem. Next year, the, the insurance cost could increase for everybody.
But then, if you're trying to say you're going to guarantee them five thousand dollars on top of that increase...
Well, I'm saying just add it into their salary, just bump up their salary as a, you know, it's a contract, right? You, you've got different things in your contract, and one of them is salary, one of them is insurance, and I would say just change the, increase the salary line by some amount, less than, obviously not the thirty thousand, but, you know...
It's only seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand.
I'm not trying to be mean by any means, but I think that's a wonderful idea. That option was not given to me when, when I was given the crappiest insurance in the world, um, you know, so, as nice as that is, it's, you know, it's, it's...
That's the game where you play with, you, health insurance will change at all times. You're never gonna have an excellent plan one year, you're gonna have a good year, and then next year, you're gonna have a crappy year, so, I mean, it's just a, it's a dicey role with health insurance.
I mean, the BC five, if anything, it's probably a, a positive step for us, having that plan for the four non-CBAs, but then is that fair to everybody else? You know, I, it's...
When does a decision need to be, when this, when the contracts get written up? You have another meeting this morning. You have time. Okay.
I, I failed, I, I don't understand the conversation. I mean, this has been a school board, um, goal for five years I've been here.
I'm, I'm fine voting on it tonight.
Anybody on the same insurance plan? It is a wonderful insurance plan. It is an absolutely wonderful insurance plan.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm...
I recently had a shoulder put in, it cost me twenty bucks. Twenty bucks for a new titanium shoulder.
And I'm fine with voting on it tonight.
I'd like to, I'd like to think about it for, for two weeks myself, so I'd, I'd like to just put it on the, put it on the agenda for next, next week. And get any feedback over the week, if anyone has any ideas, um, and then we'll do it with minimal discussion next week. You okay with that? I mean, next, next meeting, I keep saying next week.
Yeah, and if anybody has questions, you can email us, I mean, I, I, Tim and I work together on, the, the issue with, when you switch to a lower plan, is that, that cost savings is really realized for years. It's not just a one-year savings.
For the district, you mean?
For the district.
Right.
Right, so, just keep that in mind.
Which is important, which is what we've been after.
And I understand the savings for years, but it's, it's, but we get a quote for the amount, so it's, it's not this, it's not like this year where we're seeing a five-thousand-dollar savings, you know, per person, and we can say, "Let's add five thousand dollars to them." Next year, when they give us a quote, that quote will be the twenty-three thousand.
But those quotes will still be, Barbie, those quotes will still be...
I'm gonna wear my long johns.
The BC five will still be upwards around twenty-seven thousand, and then the AB twenty will still be somewhere around twenty-two, so that's the cost savings.
Right.
There's a difference between the two.
Right.
We're not stopping paying that.
But you know what, I might be able to do better if I sort of take some names off of here and make things black, so you can't see them, and then, like, distribute it to you in writing.
Why don't you send out an email?
Great.
Wait, I mean, you could just...
Yeah, that, that's a good idea.
I understand it totally, you haven't gone through the negotiations.
Right, because we were, right, we've done it for, right, but I can certainly understand how it could be confusing for people, too. So, let me see what I can do to clarify that, and I'll email it out.
Any other new items?
Totally random question from Mrs. DePere. Thank you for the master plan surveys. If it's okay, the town administrator has asked me to drop off your popsicles tomorrow. Is that okay, if I just come by during the day and bring those in? Should they come before?
The weather has not been conducive for us to go outside and have extra recess and do the celebration for the class, so...
I heard tomorrow might be the day, though.
That's still pending, but now that the sixth grade, the sixth grade class was the one that won, a sixth grade class, so now that they're back to Maravista, if the
So now that they're back to Maravista, if the weather gets nicer, then we can certainly decide on what day to do that.
Do you have somewhere to, freezer to store them in?
Sure we do.
Okay.
Yep, yep, thank you for that.
I heard 70s next week.
Fantastic.
Maybe then.
All right, moving on, moving on, folks.
Thanks.
So no, no other new business? The only other thing I want to bring up is that the, the new business other, I'm going to eliminate from the agenda, so that we can keep the agenda of things. We will have a period at the end of every meeting where we can talk about what we want on the agenda for the next meeting. So keep that in mind as we're going through. Keep notes, and at the end, we'll, we'll make up a good agenda for next time. Old business, we have parking lot items. I was looking through them briefly. Reviewing specific lines throughout the budget. I think we have planned on doing. Next meeting? It's on, we'll put it on the agenda.
I believe everything went out, right?
We got emails, yes.
Were we getting hard copies of that as well? Or we need to?
In the packet.
No, no, they'll be in the packet.
They'll be in the next meeting's packet. Thank you.
All right, well, we don't have to. NSBA update. Did you all get the email from Mr. Breger?
Yes.
About the, the field condition stuff? I'd like to, have you talked about it in the athletics, in the facilities committee? You haven't had a meeting yet. What have you?
Not since then. We, we sent out an email to say we would talk about it at the next meeting.
So that's the plan for that, was we're going to go into the facilities committee?
Yeah, that will be taken care of.
It's in the folder already.
I'm assuming that this drainage that they're talking about is different than the drainage that we just took care of?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
It just seems weird that it wasn't all taken care of at once.
Well, yeah, two different sites, different pipes.
We haven't put them date in the meeting, so.
No.
I thought we might do a table folder.
And then I added something to that.
You added?
I added.
The next, the next meeting?
I added to your parking lot stipends and splitting drama have to be determined.
That's good, yep, yep.
Put that in there.
Uh, cafeteria ceiling, I expect the facilities.
Yep, we also, we actually got a quote, too.
Oh, yeah.
From there, I'll briefly talk about that. We got a quote where it's not for the ceiling itself, but to put in the soundproof. And it was right around $5,500 to actually, $8,500 to actually soundproof that whole place, without putting a ceiling in.
So we have to RFP that now?
Oh, yes.
And the additional piece to that, that Tom is working on, is if we did move forward with that potentially, or put an RFP out for that, we'd also have to consider the sprinkler heads needing to be moved and the lighting fixtures needing to be moved.
Did we look into what Gary had suggested about the paint and the flipping the tiles?
Uh, we did. There's differences of opinion whether that changes anything or doesn't change anything. So I guess it's up to you guys to decide which side of the fence you're on.
I, I look forward to the facilities committee coming back with a recommendation on that.
Yep, we will.
CIP plan. Not sure what to do about this. Apparently there's any ideas. A capital improvement plan is something we do need to come up with.
Definitely need to, I think we need to.
Should we have another work session for that?
Yeah.
Instead of a board meeting, another work session? I love meetings.
So we, we did say we're going to do that on the fifth Fridays, which we have one in June, I mean, the fifth Thursday.
Oh, I see.
June 30th, June 30th is, we don't, we don't have a meeting. We have a meeting on the second and on the 16th. The 30th is, you know, every, every four months we'll have one. But you're, you guys want to try something like that? To work on the capital improvement plan for the 30th?
I will be out of town.
You'll be out of town? I don't know if I will be or not, but.
So I'm assuming that, that, Tim, you at least, because you said you did it with the town. I, I know nothing about like a capital improvement plan. But I'm fine having the meeting. I just don't want to have a meeting to have a meeting if, if we don't know what we're doing. Do you know anything about capital improvement plans?
I love it.
Okay.
Tim does, though.
There's, there's not a lot to it. It's, it's, the problem is getting people to participate. So the people that need to participate are the principal, the facilities person, Tom, someone like Mr. Robert. If he has any thoughts, you know, something to two, three, four, five years down the road that he's going to, you know, need to spend a lot of money on. Certainly pending our decision on, on the food service. So there's the kitchen, which is particularly bad, to be honest with you. So the idea, you, you have to get people involved, those people involved. They have to do some homework to find out what the problem is and what the cost is. And then setting up a CIP is just a matter of taking all of that information that you, you garner and putting it together in a plan that's not in stone, but that you would like to follow over the next five or 10 years to improve the school in such a way as you don't get big spikes in the budgeting.
So would your recommendation then be to send out like an email to these people and say?
That's absolutely got to be the first thing.
Okay, instead of setting a meeting?
So the town tried to do it and tried to, and the town did it, and tried to get the school to take part in it. And it was just a, a huge waste of time with the school. I mean, the town made a really nice CIP and planned things out, but the school would not participate, you know.
So if we do it and we send these emails out and ask, again, I guess we need to, I, again, I don't know who. So you're saying Mr. Robert, Mr. Sayers?
Who would spend, and, and you have to make a threshold. So what is our threshold? Is it $10,000, which seems reasonable to me? But maybe you guys have another idea.
So $10,000 in one pro, like, again, I don't know what you're saying. So, okay, so $10,000 for one.
You set up a threshold, and, and different people have a different. Some towns where our schools might set it up at $25,000, you know, and, and figure out what that is. And then you, you, you simply try to put things, what's, what needs to be happening first. So you try to prioritize. And then you try to put some in each year and plan ahead. So again, the whole point is to not have to address things in a surprise way, you know, that you, you plan them ahead and you're not, not going to drive the public, the taxpayers, crazy with big spikes in their taxes.
So can I ask the superintendent's representative and Ms. DePere, is this something that we could ask of?
Yep, we do SIP in other districts. I was actually going to suggest that I pull some sample CIP worksheets, because it sort of illustrates exactly what Tim's talking about, and put those in the next packet, so you guys can look and see how they plan it out. Because it's done by fiscal year, and it's done by project, and it's done by, and that might give you a context for what it is.
Okay.
Can we, can we start sending those out now?
You mean samples CIP worksheets?
No, sending to, asking, starting to ask the department, the department heads to fill them out.
I mean, to at least think about them, you know, like Mr. Sayers.
Well, I think you want to, I, I, I think you got to make some just, yes, you need to get them involved in showing up to the meeting. But Tim's, there's another piece, and Tim.
Like the ceiling or?
Well, you got to figure out what the ceiling is. You got to figure out what worksheet, I'm going to basically steal a Nottingham worksheet for you.
Okay.
But you guys need to figure out if that's going to work for Northwood. You also need to figure out if you're going to work with the town in your SIP, or if you're going to do it independently. Because, I mean, philosophically, your capital improvement plan is a nice thing to do overall, because it's the same wallets that you're affecting with your taxes, whether it be the town or the school. So you do want to have some real strong communication, if not collaboration, around doing that. So you, you're not making sure that, you know, and I'm not saying they're doing this, but, you know, building a new town hall at the same time, you might be building a new addition to the school.
Sure.
Right, right. You want to avoid stuff like that. And I'm not saying that's going to happen here, but, so.
I will, I will see if I can try to.
Tim's right, that in the, it, it helps if you do it together.
I would just make a suggestion. Obviously, we're going through a leadership team change in the building, but I would make a suggestion, if you're looking at interview questions, to think about asking potential principals if they've had experience going through this process of a capital improvement plan, and what experience they have that they could bring to the building.
That's a good one. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll come back to that with some forms next meeting.
Yep, on the next, next agenda.
Sending them out to, yep.
Well, I think then you have to have a discussion.
Yep, we'll have a discussion, and then we'll send them out to the.
You send the manifests around.
But the biggest thing, like Tim said, the, the commitment and the involvement of these people, that's the biggest thing.
Well, I mean, we can ask them to do it, but they don't do it. I think our job is, as, as school boards, we can set a policy saying, "That shall."
Well, I mean, basically, that's the director of the administration.
We can do that, too. We can do that, too.
We're going to make that.
If for some reason it's not working, we can, we can fix things. Right?
You might want to have a representative from town hall.
Yep.
Be a part of that, be a part of that meeting.
He's here, isn't he? He's not really.
Right, we, we want to talk to the selectmen, I think.
That, that is completely handled by the planning board. The CIB comes 100% under the planning board. Really has nothing to do with the town administrator.
I didn't say town administrator, I said town.
I know you didn't. So I'm just saying that the person, so you would need to talk to Bob Strobel. And I know that they're starting, they're considering redoing the CIP. And that would be a perfect time, if they are, for us to do one also. But Bob Strobel would be the person to talk to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, school board calendar, we're in May. Just to make sure we're not missing anything. Renewal of lease for the after-school program. Do you know anything about that? Can you write that down as something to ask about? I don't know if any action is needed, but if so, we should definitely move forward with that. I don't even.
That just triggered, I thought there was something somewhere that you had put in one of your reports, or, I'm, maybe I'm totally wrong, but I seem to remember reading something somewhere.
ESY summer program.
Oh, that's probably what it was, yeah. Yeah, sorry.
That one's covered.
Okay, I was like, I totally remember something.
But that's, I can see you could connect those.
So the other things we have is Teacher Appreciation Day and Volunteer Appreciation Day. I assume you're going to do something for that, Wendy, coming up soon.
We've done something all week for teacher appreciation.
That's fine.
We've done the whole week.
Yep, just touching on every, I just want to touch, make sure we're not losing anything.
We haven't done anything.
Graduation date we set.
Other days.
Again, if someone would log from the, another member of the school board would like to come to help serve on the 12th, more than welcome to come and help serve lunch on the 12th, when the, when we, the PTA.
Oh, now it's serve lunch? I thought we just eat lunch.
And if you'd like to make anything.
Is it chicken?
It's a, it's a, it's a platter. Or if you'd like to make anything and drop it off.
I was going to say. Yeah. Anything else? I don't, I don't think we're, I just want to make sure we're not dropping anything besides that, that's the only thing I see on there.
Summer school planning, we've got an update on that.
We're just.
Positions will be posted. Kindergarten registration.
Kindergarten registration?
May 17th.
May 17th.
That was on our thing, yep.
So.
All right, cool.
Back to the, the plans for anticipated surplus.
Yeah.
We have the list of wish list things that we have agreed to fund and the things that we are going to fund. Can we see the total that we have at the end with those things subtracted?
Yeah, can we, can we, can we do that as part of a report next week, you think?
Okay, you got to be a little clearer with me what you're looking for.
Next meeting.
Yeah.
What are, what are anticipated surpluses after?
After the wish list items.
Given your anticipated fund balance at the end of the year? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that's typically part of a report, anyway.
Yeah.
But I'd like to see after the wish list items have been taken out.
I think the last one, I think so. I think the last one had the reading, I think she had anticipated the reading and the math programs and a bunch of other stuff.
Because some of them haven't been approved yet. They're still out there, the RFPs are out there. So there's a lot of wish list stuff that hasn't been.
Well, that, that stuff wouldn't be in the.
They're in there, but, is that what you're talking about?
Right, so that's.
I'm just curious, the surplus after those items have been funded, excuse my ignorance, not having been on the board and the previous surplus was apparent. Is that normally given back to the town to buy it on the tax rate? I mean, what is usually done with that?
It's given back to the town for the selectmen to decide what to do with it.
And they usually buy it on the tax rate?
That's a very typical thing for them to do with it, yes.
Just making sure that I understood.
Future agenda items is already on here. I didn't even notice that. So any, anything that we did not talk about today that you would like to talk about next meeting? It's not already on the.
So, I know, that's, I was going to say, under old business, since there's the other still on there?
Yeah.
You could shoot me, I know you, yes. You can shoot, I know, so you could shoot me now. I have been doing a lot of thinking on the school bus. And I apologize to Wendy, because I know you sent out the email to the teachers. But I would like for the school board to reconsider the start time and the end time of the school day. I have to thank Ms. Royer, because, of course, it came at the end, because that's when you can do public speaking. But, you know, some of what she said about the kids starting the day in the dark, some of what Shane said about, you know, and I, I think I said this, too. We, we're paying somebody money to do a job. This is not our problem. We've done multiple things to try to help and fix it. I, I would like the board to reconsider the start time of school.
We'll put that on the agenda for, for next meeting.
I just know, I know it was something that was, that was not urgent, but that had been sent out to the teachers already saying when it was. But, and sent out to Ms. Alisandro.
I mean, it's being questioned. People are not necessarily happy with that decision, and they are wondering what can be done about it.
That doesn't, that, it's just been sitting in the back of my jaw. It just hasn't been sitting right.
My caution is that the, the people who are not happy about it is the people you're going to hear from, the people who are happy about it.
And I have not heard from anyone.
And you won't hear from people who are okay with it.
Right, and I have not heard from anyone. This is just me thinking about it.
Yep.
And, and actually just not being happy with the vote that I did.
I will, we, we can, we can have a discussion next meeting. And if we want to reconsider it, we will do that, the meeting following.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's.
Yeah, because teachers need to know if, they, they need to know by a certain time to be able to manage their schedules, if their certain schedules are going to change.
Okay.
Because of their own personal needs on arrival time.
So if we're going to, all right, we'll have a discussion, and we'll, we'll decide that next week.
I know, I know.
Unless it has to be done before then, what, do you think this has to be done before next week?
They, they've come to me to share that they have concerns about it early.
Do you think this needs to be done before next meeting? Is all I'm asking.
I, I think it needs to be maybe done at the next meeting, but not later than the next meeting.
Start the CBA doesn't count right now, because it doesn't start until June 30th, or July 1st, I mean.
But unless there's, if there hasn't been a language change, then it's in force.
Unless there hasn't, there is a language change in that section about the start and stop time.
Right, but is there a language change in the notification? Because if there's.
In the new CBA, you mean?
Look, let's, let's, let's look at it. Let, let people get time to think about it. All right, we'll talk about it next meeting. We'll, we'll look at the contracts, you know, in, in the meantime.
Right, I think that's what Scott was looking at, though, was to decide if that was okay.
If what was okay?
If the, the waiting.
If we could change it.
No, if you're saying the, the wait time was okay. Is that what you were looking at?
I'm trying to see if there's a notification requirement in the contract that has the teachers notified by a certain time of that change, and whether you have time to take two weeks to change it.
It was March 30th, March 30th, but the contract does not start until July 1 for that change.
So it was not retroactive for this current year, but moving forward, they need to know in subsequent years by March 30th if there's a change in the day.
And it was a con, and it was a wording change, if that, because, and that's what I was trying to say.
That's all I wanna know.
Bob seemed to think it was fine, but, that's what he said. Anyway, you good? Anything else? All that old business, all right.
So let's table for next meeting.
Next meeting, we will have a discussion. It'll be on the agenda.
To reconsider school start time.
Yep.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I'd like to ask if we could not do, make sure that it doesn't come out to parents, and that's the thing, too, is in the Laker for tomorrow.
It's in the Laker tomorrow.
Well, that might help us or not help us.
Right. We could have people actually attend a meeting in two weeks.
Help you get some feedback.
Yep, for sure.
I did post it on Facebook, by the way. I don't know if you saw my post on there. I did, I did put that out there and get some feedback. That's fine. There was some parent feedback from there as well.
And I, this is, again, I don't go on Facebook, so I haven't seen that. This is not having anything to do with feedback from anyone. This is all.
Do you prefer it be removed from the Laker? I just wrote on the 21st, there was a vote, this is the new start time, this is the new end time. If it's premature to put that out there, I know we voted, so it's current.
It's voted, it's current, it has to go out, and if it changes on the next meeting, then we'll have to rechange it.
Okay, I will leave it. Thank you.
Any other, um, anyone else want stuff for the agenda for next, for next meeting? That's your, that's the way.
Oh, first off, so that's about the third thing now you've unilaterally by yourself changed. And I'm not sure that's right. I think these things, if you wanna take other off here and other off there and all of the changes you're made, I don't think you have the authority to do that without the board's approval.
I think I do.
Okay. I guess we'll find out. So that's what we're gonna do. So when I bring my list each week of things that I wanna talk about, we're not gonna talk about them.
No, we can put them on the agenda for the following week so that we can all be aware and do our background information, and the public knows what we're gonna talk about. So they can be here if they want to be, and then they can talk about it in, in public comments if they want to. I mean, I think it's important that we, it, it'll help with communication. I really think it will.
Yeah, well, I think you've taken away all communication is what you're doing, but that's fine. We'll work on it.
What is new business, then? Is that people can talk about whatever they want?
New, a lot of the stuff that we put on the agenda items go under new business. This will all be new business things, unless we're doing old business stuff.
So if I have an issue that I wanna raise, it goes under new business for the next time? Is that what you're saying?
Sure, yep.
Okay, that's.
Unless it relates to old business or something, or, yeah. Okay, future meetings are, uh, we have a joint board meeting with Co-Brown, at Co-Brown in the Co-Brown Library on May 11th. These are always good times to catch up with the, with the programs that they're doing and the, and the Bridges Program for the transition stuff that they do. Uh, our next regular board meeting is May 19th, two weeks. Uh, and then following that, we have a May 23rd joint board meeting with the SAU, and then two more meetings in June.
Make it three.
What?
Can I just add one quick thing that I forgot to mention that you wanted to follow up on?
Real quick.
We added a camera in the lobby. It costs $300. It's been installed, and that job is done. Thank you.
Thanks. So any closing public comments?
Sharon Plor, 10 Lower Camp Road. Um, I, like Barbie, have been thinking about this bus thing, too, and it kind of, again, why are we the ones always changing because of the bus company? Um, but one thing to consider, why don't we go later? And so I know we jumped to the, let's go earlier, and I don't know. I don't know what the contract says, and if it's Co-Brown that continually has the problem, how come we are the ones that keep changing our time if they need another bus? You know, I'm just saying, it just seems like we're, we're always the ones, our money, our bus, our problem. So I wanted to throw out there, and I do know there are some teachers that are not signing their contracts because they are concerned about this, how it's going to affect them dropping their kids off or getting their kids, or whatever it is, so just wanted to let you guys know. Thank you. And how will the parents know? Like, if parents wanna come and speak to this for the next meeting? Cause like, in the, like, cause is it already going out in the Laker that it's?
It is going out, yeah.
Yeah, so just.
But there'll be a rediscussion on the next meeting, and that will be posted, so if they wanna come then.
Okay.
Can I put that in the Laker, too? That it will be, it's on, it's on the agenda, just even if it's been decided, it's on the agenda for the.
It's on the agenda for reconsideration.
I will add that to the Laker.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Linda Royer, I'm speaking as an employee of Northwood School. I just wanted to talk about the artist in residence. I believe that it's been for the middle school students, because if you walk through the front door, there's some work that's been done in the past. And I think it says that it was done by the 5th and the 6th grade, so I don't think that we've ever gone and done anything with the K through 4 students. I think it's always been our, our middle, middle school students, just to clarify that. And I also wanted to, um, address how, um, the staff was notified about the search committee. Colleen Gulick Ryan sent out an email to the Northwood. It's N W E S F A C, and says, hi, everyone. Please advise that if you are a support staff employee and are interested in being on the principal search committee, you need to contact Dr. Godomski directly through email at the SAU. There will only be one person selected from the support staff, teaching staff, as well as one parent in addition to administration and board members. And then she goes on to give Dr. Godomski's address. Thank you for your consideration, Colleen Gulick Ryan, president of NESP. And also, Lauren's not here tonight, but on her behalf, I would like to read what she sent out to the professional staff. She addressed it to staff. Hi, everyone. Please advise that if you are a professional staff employee and are interested in being on the principal search committee, you need to contact Dr. Godomski directly through email at the SAU. There will only be one person selected from the support staff, teaching staff, as well as one parent in addition to administration and board members. And she goes on to give Dr. Godomski's email address. Thank you for your consideration, Lauren Dow, president of NTIA. So both letters went out to everybody so that whoever wanted to participate from the staff could participate.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to say anything? Hey, are you done with that? Do you have need for a non-public session? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We adjourned.